on the 5th of May 2022. I call for councillor attendance and I can see all councillors except for councillor John Eick is in attendance. Councillor John Eick is running just a couple of minutes late, so I'll continue on. Moving on to acknowledgement of country. If we say council respectfully acknowledges the traditional owners as custodians of the land upon which we meet. We pay our respects to their elders, past, present and emerging, as the keepers of the traditions, cultures and stories of a proud people. I now call for any declarations of interest on matters in the agenda. Thank you. There are none. There is no business outstanding. So we're going to the confirmation of the minutes and the recommendation is that the minutes of the meeting held on the 7th of April 2022 be confirmed. Would anyone like us to ask a council officer any questions on those minutes? No, in that case I will move those minutes. Do I have a second for those? Thank you, councillor Ireland. Any discussion on those minutes? No, I'll put the matter to the vote. Those in favour, please raise your hand. They get unanimous in the room. We'll now move on to item two, which is the Road Maintenance Performance Contract or RMPC, contract 27 and 28 for 2022, 2023 and 23, 24. May I have the relevant council officer to elect him, please? That's the lectern there. Thank you. Obviously it's your first time. In that case, may I please state your name and your job title, please?
My name's Regard Skitter. I'm a technical officer with roads and maintenance.
Thank you. Scooter, is it?
Sorry?
Mr. Scooter?
Yes.
Thank you. Thank you for this report. May I ask, in attachment one but also on page 14, when it says the purpose of the report, it mentions a list of state roads that the council will be contracted to maintain. Are you able to go into any detail as to what kind of maintenance is on there? When I go through the attachment one, it talks generically about fixing, edge repair, pothole patching, fill cracks and so on. Is there a list of exactly what needs to be done or is it just a rolling maintenance?
In general, the contract covers most maintenance items that would require work on the road. It's in the rates and schedules, the items are generally listed in there. But it also, it covers the whole scope of general roads and drainage maintenance.
I note that each year it's about three and a half million dollars from the state. And when I go into the attachment... And when I go into the attachment, about half of that 1.4 million, 1.5 million is for pavement repairs, mechanical minor. What is that?
That would cover the scope of rutting, potholes, edge repairs, the likes of basically surface failures.
And will this contract be enough to maintain those roads to a safe standard?
Yes, it's run over history of approximately 26 years, and annually it gets, in agreement with transport and main roads, the rates are adjusted in line with cost price indexing, and generally we find that it covers the required scope of work.
Thank you. Are there any other questions, Mr Scooter? No, thank you very much.
Sure, welcome.
We have recommendations A and B as per our documentation. I move those two recommendations together, do I have a second to that? Thank you councillor Consuman. I open it up for discussion. There being no discussion, I put the matter to the vote, those in favour please raise your hand. It's unanimous in the room, thank you. Move on to item three, which is the Infrastructure Environment Department Capital Delivery Report, March 2022. May I have the relevant council officer to the lectern please?
Good morning, Graham Martin, manager, capital delivery.
Thank you, Mr Martin. Thank you once again for the attachment here on, which is a pictorial and I think a great update on the work that's been happening the last month for council. May I ask, I can see that there's a few things running a bit soft.
Yes.
Because of the weather and other things. But I guess I'm looking at page 58, and it's the bar chart, or that column chart. For January, February, you can see that our budget was well ahead of the actuals before the rain hit. Is that impacting how we'll address our budget in the next coming year? Or what's your view of the disparity between our budget and actuals?
Sorry, I meant in terms of what may turn into carryovers for next financial year. Yeah, we will have some impact into next financial year, and as some of the projects are pushing back, we do have a few of the projects that have had the largest impact on this financial year, being split funded projects, specifically into the Red Bank Plains Road, stage three, and is touched on in the report where the contractor who's engaged for that work was heavily impacted doing some works on another project and is delayed by three or four months. So while that's an impact to this year's financial delivery, the funding is available for future financial years, so that should have minimal impact. The contractor's already engaged, so they should continue on when they're available to come in in the new financial year. We had some savings and some deferrals in the road resurfacing programme, and I think we'll need to look at those road resurfacing programme to fit it in over the full year, next year. We were able to achieve some savings this year and able to absorb some of the carryovers this year, and we're hoping to do the same next year. Some of our concerns, we've got some price pressures coming from the market generally because of the conditions that we're all experiencing, but we're also seeing that there's some delays to contractor availability for next financial year. So I think looking forward, some of the risks that we're anticipating and looking to mitigate may be some delays from some contractors being available. We may be able to absorb some of the carryovers that are coming through from this financial year.
With the things that will be carried over to next financial year, how much of that is our in-house council teams versus contracted teams? Because obviously there's only so much capacity our council teams have.
Well, the good news is that from our internal contracting teams, they've been able to keep up with the workload that we'd allowed for them. And that is taken into account that they're still working, some of the crews are working on recovery works with the gravel roads. So our internal crews are ticking along very well, I've got to say. So most of the carryover, and I would say 95% of that carryover will be for external crews, which means we can pick that up in the market, albeit it'll be a tight market.
Are there any other questions of Mr Martin? Thank you, councillor Doyle.
Thank you ma'am, Mr Martin, just a quick one. You've outlined, I guess, a number of the challenges that we're facing here at council in delivering the programme. Civil construction has been impacted no differently to a lot of industries because of COVID and short supply. So I'm just wondering, how agile are we, I guess, in looking at our techniques and road treatments to try and continue to deliver on time, on budget? Does that factor in? Are there new emerging treatments that may assist us?
Yeah, I think that's a fair question, yes, I think the answer is we are becoming more agile, and it's a matter of necessity. Invention is the, necessity is the mother of invention, so we're starting to have a look at some of our processes. Looking at, particularly getting a bit engineering speak, but looking at bitumen treated bases to provide some extra reinforcing. All indications are that it's a quicker process. It also has some sustainability benefits because you recycle the existing materials. It may have degraded over time, but the bitumen treatment allows them to be upgraded. So we're looking at a few of those treatments. The dust suppression trial that is due this month is also something that we'd probably look to expand in future years, assuming, assuming it works, that's the reason for the trial. So yeah, we are looking at how we can innovate a little bit more, working closely with our procurement partners as well, and being a little bit more agile in how we put together our contracts and our packages, and how we bulk up the work to make Ipswich a, you know, the most attractive place possible for contractors to come and work.
Great, thank you.
Councillor Ireland?
Thank you, good morning. With the Red Bank Plains Road, stage three.
Yes.
It said that the principal contractor for Enerjex and Telstra couldn't complete it because of other works, but councillor will now deliberate and advise the contractor whether this is acceptable. So have we advised, do we know what month it might all come back online?
Oh, sorry, yeah, I may have not covered that properly in the wording. Yeah, so the contractor has come back to us and asked if he can, they can recommence the works in August, which is obviously a significant delay. We've had a look at that, they're still putting together their proposal for us as to what that means and what will be their revised timelines. When this was initially discussed, we've had a discussion between ourselves and in liaison with the procurement team as well. We looked at it, if we cut and run from that existing contract and went back out to tender, then the delays would have extended it, you know, somewhere in the six to nine month mark. So we are taking on at this stage a, let's call it a watching brief, that depending on how they come back with their proposal, we're looking that the lesser of two evils is to accept their delay. And the cause of their delay is genuine in that they were working, I believe, out in the Highlands and got severely impacted by the floods out there, and had a three to four month rebuild of work that they'd already partially completed. So it's a circumstance that I must say I'm not had a lot of experience with before. Generally, when you're getting those sorts of delays, you're looking at a contractor who's just run over time. This is a bit of an extraordinary circumstance which we're working, trying to work with the contractor in this case.
But there's no guarantee that he'll actually start in August. I mean, the roads, it needs some work.
Yeah, absolutely it does, yeah, and we don't shy away from that, but they're giving us all the assurances they can, but if they don't hit the assurances we need, then we will have to review what that means. And if that means cancelling the contract, then it'll be a long wait. But that is not the reason for us to engage with the contractor. We want to make sure we've got the right technical reasons for keeping the contractor on at this stage.
Okay, do you think we'll get it done by Christmas?
Completed by Christmas? Started by Christmas, yes. I do believe we'll be started by Christmas and we'll be making some noise out there by Christmas, but we definitely won't be finished by Christmas.
Thank you.
Thank you councillor Ireland. Any other questions of Mr Martin? No, thank you very much, Mr Martin. I move that the report be received and the contents noted, do I have a second for that? Thank you councillor Ligon. Any discussion? Thank you councillor Doyle.
I just want to reiterate my comment or question earlier that as we continue to work through the challenges in delivering the capital programme on time, on budget, it's a good opportunity to look at the road treatments and techniques used. And that's so that we can continue to deliver, but very separately to that, I think all of us as councillors have been approached by residents at some point questioning the type of road treatments and techniques. And we all like to be footpath supervisors, but, you know, they're fair questions. Are they value for money? So yeah, I really want to watch this one closely and work with council officers as a council to deliver better.
Thank you councillor Doyle. Any other discussion? Now I put the matter to the vote, those in favour please raise your hand. It's unanimous and carried. We move on to item four, which is the exercise of delegation report. Would anyone like to ask a question of the relevant council officer? Now in that case I move that the report be received and contents noted, do I have a second for that? Thank you councillor Doyle. Any discussion on the matter? I put the matter to the vote, those in favour please raise your hand. It's unanimous and carried. We move on to item five, which is the Planning Environment Court's Action Status Report. May I have the relevant council officer come to the lectern please?
Good morning, Anthony Bowles, acting development planning manager.
Morning, Mr Bowles. Would you mind giving us an update on the matter of Landtrac being my clean away, how that's going?
The appeals themselves, we're still awaiting the judgment, so unfortunately there's no update there. With respect to the similar matter, the judicial review, there was.
The judicial on the one list?
Yeah, the one list judicial review. The matter was heard recently on the 3rd of May. The order was for disclosure of documents to be given by various parties. Council hasn't been required to provide much information in that respect. Mostly information relating to details of the application itself, details of the decision or the documents behind the decision-making procedure to call in the application, as well as some disclosure about lobbying efforts by the parties. So that's available for viewing on the E-Corts website if you'd like more details, but there's quite a bit of documentation to be provided by the other parties in that appeal. So that's required by the 13th of May, there'll be another court review then.
13th of May? Would you mind emailing the councillors the link to that?
Yep.
Fine, thank you. Any other questions of Mr Bowles? No, thank you very much.
Thank you.
I move that the report be received and contents noted, do I have a second for that? Thank you councillor John Eak. Any discussion? No, I move the matter to the vote, those in favour please raise your hand. Thank you, it's unanimous and carried. I have no notices of motion, no matters arising, no procedural motions of formal matters. So we'll finish this meeting at nine seventeen, and the next meeting will start in 10 minutes' time. Thank you.